Those folks.
The invocation tonight will be led by Elder Ray Ramirez of Montclair Christian Church and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Johnson. And we do still need to find Mr. Ramirez in the list, so give me a moment.
You can wait.
I don't see his name. He might be one of the call-in users. The number ending five zero nine one. Is that a? I'm now giving all the call-in users the ability to talk in case one of you is Elder Ray Ramirez.
No luck so far?
No, I don't know if he was able to join in on the meeting. He was very excited to be here, so.
Okay, Mr. Ramirez, are you there? Is Mr. Ramirez?
Andrea, we might want to remind people how to unmute themselves when they're on the phone because it seems like the two users are possibly on the phone only.
If you hit star six, you should be able to unmute yourself as a dial-in caller.
Mr. Ramirez, you're there. Please dial six.
Star six.
Star six, excuse me. And to unmute yourself, again, hit star six. Mr. Ramirez.
No, it's possible that that's not him, so.
Let's do this then, since he's online. Let's, I will ask for a moment of silence to recognize the ninety-eight families and residents who died as a result of COVID- nineteen for the last one year. I asked for a moment of silence and then after that we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's please all stand and let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Temru.
Present at City Hall.
Mayor Dutre.
Present.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll be doing presentations. And as I just mentioned, last year is the one-year anniversary that the pandemic first occurred or began. Here we are one year later. In the last twelve months, this city and of course this nation have lost, this nation, I believe, has now lost over six hundred thousand residents. And this city itself, of those are ninety-eight residents that succumbed to COVID- nineteen. And obviously, we will not forget those and then obviously their family members are suffering the loss of their family members or their loved ones. So I think it's befolding that we have a presentation tonight to at least recognize folks in our community that are trying to do special things to assist residents and others in Montclair get through COVID- nineteen. So this evening, under the Community Reacquisition Award, we'll be honoring Daniel Burkholder. Daniel is an essential worker in physical therapy, field-helping individuals of all ages who have recently had surgery or required therapy. In his personal time, his passion remains comfortable for our community. He led a Neighborhood Christmas Initiative to spread cheer during the holidays to uplift spirits in the community. Daniel and his four-year-old son made goodie bags for the community and walked door to door in December and placed them in each person's mailbox. He also decorated very early November with tons of lights and decorations to get everyone feeling festive and positive during the epidemic. Fortunately, one of Daniel's neighbors recently passed away from a tragic choking incident and he put his first aid abilities to the test to help try and save the neighbor. One neighbor ran over hysterically asking for help as his brother was choking. Daniel sprung into action in an attempt to perform life-saving actions until police and medics arrived. This act of heroism should not be unnoticed. And I'm proud to call this man my husband, obviously, and his wife wrote this description. She went on to her say, Daniel, he brings joy to the entire community and is teaching his four-year-old son to help spread cheer during his difficult time as well. This paired with what he does for his job, helping rehabilitate children and adults, especially elderly, in his act of heroism two weeks ago, make him an amazing candidate for this award. So this evening, I want to recognize Daniel for his heroism and for his willingness to step up to the plate and bring some cheer and pride in the Montclair community, especially his neighborhood during the difficulties, especially in November, December, where we were facing a second lockdown, or I believe a third lockdown. And so bringing that to the neighborhood. So Daniel, are you on the phone? If you are, can you mute yourself either by hitting star six or you can unmute yourself if you're on the Zoom laptop or iPad? Are you there, Daniel? I believe I saw his name.
I could be able to, yeah. I made him a panelist. So he should be able to unmute and if he wants to show his video as well.
Are you there, Daniel? I don't see him. I don't see him on the. Hello?
Hello?
Daniel?
Here, I'm curious.
Daniel, how you doing, Daniel?
Hey, how are you, Mayor? Thank you. I appreciate the honor. It's a true blessing for you guys to go as far as you are and recognize people that have been fortunate enough to be able to work throughout this whole pandemic. And luckily, I've been one of those and I'm just truly blessed for that opportunity. But I definitely thank you for allowing me to be a part of this.
Well, great. And again, we appreciate what you've done for your community. Trying to get the spirit out, trying to get people's hopes up that we can get through this pandemic, put some cheers in people's minds. Obviously, being heroic in your neighborhood as well. Fortunately, the first life deceased, but you went out of your way to help him out. But we have a certificate and we'll try to schedule a date to come out. Think either the city clerk or Marsha Richter. One of those two will reach out to you. And I'll come by personally give you this certificate.
Wow, that's amazing. And again, I'm truly honored and I really thank you guys, the whole city council, you, Mayor Dutre, and just everybody for really allowing me to be a part of this.
Very good. And you're part of Burkholder family. Are you a second generation of Montclair?
No, sir.
Another family in Montclair called Burkholders. I don't know if you're part of that family or not.
Oh, man, no way. I did not know that.
Yes, there is.
I'm the first one in my family, as far as I know.
And your wife is, who submitted this? Your wife's name is?
Crystal.
Crystal, we want to recognize Crystal as well. Thank you, Crystal, for nominating your husband.
Of course.
Yes, and again, you guys are amazing, but my wife is just a true blessing for everything that she does and let alone nominating me for something so honorable like this. And again, I'm lucky to have her and my two beautiful boys.
Great. Well, thank you very much and we'll schedule a time to come out and visit you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, we now go down to public comment. And city clerk, you have any members in the public that wish to speak?
Yes, we did get a request from Bruce Culp to speak in public comment as well as to speak on an item under consent, so I can mention that later, but.
Okay, is Bruce here someplace?
There he is. I found him. So he should be able to unmute now.
Okay, Bruce. All right, are you there, Bruce?
I am here.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay, first off, I just wanted to also thank our, that recognized Daniel Burkholder for the wonderful, you know, inspiration he brings to residents like me to try, you know, to do better and stuff like that, that truly deserving of that award. And along those lines, I was just going to speak just a little bit under public comment about COVID- nineteen and, you know, being about a year since we last had a public meeting. I know we had one interim public meeting where we were all in person, but I think it was about this time last year, we were just ending our in-person public council meeting. So just a milestone here after a year. At that point, we, you know, I know soon after that, we were, the city required masks. And so I just wanted to reiterate, you know, that as vaccines come online and the red, purple goes to red and things and people start relaxing, I think they get a little relaxed in how they are safe. So I just want to reiterate to the city that it's still a good idea to keep the mask mandate in the city of Montclair. I think it was a good idea when it was implemented. And until we get down to a level of yellow or something, yeah, I don't know what the next level is after red, but I would say that I would highly encourage the staff and city council to keep the mask mandate in the city. I'm very proud of being a resident of the city that requires it. I know every once in a while, I myself need a reminder and knowing that the city mask mandate is in there kind of puts that little note in my head to make sure I'm always wearing my mask when I'm out in public. So just wanted to offer, you know, support in that area that the residents need to be required to wear a mask. I know that there's going to be, you know, events coming up where there's going to be large gatherings. I know St. Patrick's Day, spring break, Easter. These are all times when we can see a spike again and people will let down their guard and, you know, hug and hold family members and things like that. And we just need to be careful, even though the numbers are dropping. They're dropping because of our diligence and as a result of the vaccines. And so we don't want to overwhelm all our hospitals and our ICU units and reduce the hospital, you know, emergency room access to people who have other types of emergencies. So we all got to do our part and I think the city needs to continue doing mask mandates. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bruce. You say you also wanted to speak under, on the consent calendar?
C two.
C two, you want to speak about it right now?
I could speak about it now or speak about it later?
How about right now? You have five minutes. Item C two.
So item C two, I think, is just, it provided, it was somewhat concerning to me. It was the, I think it's the license plate reader upgrade through Vigilant, a company called Vigilant. And my concern there is, you know, I'm very much in favor of law enforcement when it's necessary and, you know, helping to reduce crime. And I know that giving police departments all the tools that they need to do their job is important. What I concerned myself with in this is the ability. I guess my real, my biggest concern on that item is that, you know, there's no language in that agreement that really puts any kind of review in place of how those license plate readers and the data, more importantly, is shared. It, you know, in that agenda item, it mentions a lot about sharing information between cities and things. But I've read a few articles about this where private industry also gets this information and, you know. So it concerns me that there's no language in that agreement where we should require some kind of warrant before we share that information outside of our department, our police department, or that there's not a regular public review of how it's being used, some kind of report that the police are required to provide to the public or the city council on a quarterly or an annual basis on the many times, you know, on every use of that so that the public is aware that, you know, every license plate that those readers pass is being tracked and surveilled, you know, as residents were being, you know, surveilled by a police department without any type of warrant. There's no requirement in this agreement for any of that type of stuff. And it just, you know, these things can get out of hand, you know. I've read stories where, you know, people in the police department are tracking ex-girlfriends and things like that or this is information is being sent to private companies to, you know, to do surveillance in the private area. And so I would just ask that that language be modified in the agreement that somehow that there's some kind of public review on a regular basis and that we don't share this information outside of other police agencies possibly without some kind of warrant signed by a judge or something like that. That's my concerns with that item C two. Thank you.
I have an inch for the city manager to respond under the consent calendar regarding that and answer a question there. Okay, city clerk, do you have anybody else that wishes to speak?
I did not have any advance requests, so it doesn't look like anyone's raising their hand.
Yeah, if somebody wants to speak, this is the opportunity to speak as a member of the public. You can either raise your hand or you can unmute yourself by hitting dial six. And I see a Lincoln?
Yes, sir.
Paul Lincoln? Okay, all right, you'll have five minutes.
Hello, everybody. I just, I don't have any concerns or anything like that. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm a part of the University of Cal Poly Pomona and I just recently moved to the city about two years ago around that time. So I'm currently in my last semester and I'm just, my professor said that it is requested that I attend one of these meetings in insight, you know, it's a California government course. So I'm definitely learning everything around here, so I'm very happy to be a part of this.
Oh, great. And welcome to Montclair.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so we are now in the public comment portion and we'll go on to what's the next portion, which is public hearing. We have one item and I'll ask the city staff to do a presentation to consider orders number twenty-one dash nine nine seven.
Mr. Mayor, remember the city council, you recall that at the March first, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the city council direction was given to city staff to prepare an ordinance, specifically ordinance number twenty-one dash nine nine seven, amending the municipal code related to lifting the AB five-seven-one limitation on campaign donations. Assembly Bill five-seven-one established default campaign contributions limits for cities and counties at forty-nine hundred dollars per person per election, adjusted in each odd-numbered year. Cities and counties may however adopt their own higher or lower contribution limits by resolution or ordinance and the necessary enforcement mechanisms associated with those changes in the limits to the contribution amount. Prior to the default limit set by AB five-seven-one, the city did not have a contribution limit, therefore adopting the no-limit contribution provisions of ordinance number twenty-one dash nine nine seven is in keeping with the city's past practice. If the no-limit ordinance is approved, there is no need to adopt enforcement procedures and penalties. There is no discernible cost impact to the city general fund if the city council adopts ordinance number twenty-one dash nine nine seven. Staff recommends the council introduce and conduct the first reading on ordinance number twenty-one dash nine nine seven and set a public hearing for April five, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM to consider adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at this time. I'm sorry, the public hearing will be on the fifth. Am I correct, city manager Starr? Nevertheless, I will allow the public to speak. If any members of the public that wish to speak, this is the time to speak at this time. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand or.
Hope did request in advance to speak on this item.
Excuse me?
Bruce Culp requested to speak on this item in advance, so he's, I think he was going to speak first.
Okay, and then if you're on the phone again, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, Bruce, you're the first person. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, just I've been silent for so long in the last few days, I thought I'd start talking again. But anyways. Actually, I never have anything useful to say, but I just think I'd like to say it. So anyways, public, so on this particular item, you know, I'm not a big proponent of campaign contributions to begin with. I think that they leave public leaders beholden to the people who are receiving those contributions to the person who's providing them. I noticed, you know, even in this last election that, you know, I know that new council members here are actually making decisions based on their contribution limits and support by particular employee groups over the, you know, over the bosses of others. So, you know, it plays out like that. So, you know, to me, contribution limits unlimited sounds just, you know, insane that somebody could just, you know, if they wanted to run for mayor and outspend, you know, and got a friend that could outspend anybody around by two to one, you know, is that something you want to be, you know, trying to fight against, you know, work against as a, you know, as a council member trying to fight it or maybe a developer wants to develop a warehouse building on the Reader Ranch and tear it down and put a big warehouse on it, you know, and he sees that three council positions are coming up and he puts three of his buddies on the council and that can outspend any of the current council members by, you know, three to one on dollars. So I think, you know, to me, campaign contributions are crazy anyways. I think, you know, we should, you know, state governments should be providing funds for, you know, equal amount of funds for every, you know, person running rather than receiving individual limits. They just beholden people to certain people at that point. So maybe the forty-nine hundred dollar limit is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other speakers, so I'll close this portion.
There is, someone has their hand raised. I don't know if it's an accident.
Oh, there's Carol. Is that Carol, you there? You can, you wish to speak? You have to unmute yourself. You wish to speak?
Possibly by accident.
Could be an accident. Okay, all right, she has not muted herself, so we will move on. And, oh, Carol, are you there? Okay, we'll move on then and then I'll start with councilmember Ben Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my colleagues. I was hoping that the language in the ordinance would have a stipulation, even though it would be non-binding, I wanted it very clear that if we're not going to have any limits, that all, that we have a policy, which we have by default, a policy of full disclosure. So anything over one hundred dollars shall be reported within the confines that the FPPC states, because there's two different or three different mechanisms by which donations need to be reported depending upon how close they are to the election itself. If there could be just one addition to the ordinance stating that contributions in excess of a hundred dollars shall be reported or all contributions in excess of a hundred dollars shall be fully reported, that would put me a little bit more at ease and it gives a little bit more transparency, at least codifies it with respect to this ordinance, that would be. Address that issue for me.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that is already required under state law and under the FPPC requirements. So, I mean, we could add that, it would be redundant. But as you know, you have to fill out the reporting forms each year on a regular basis during an election season. That is public information. That is a requirement that is already mandated. So it would be redundant for us to add it, but it certainly is something we can add if that is what the council wants.
Well, then, then let this, let my comments serve as obviously public record going forward, that it is our intent, obviously, to continue that state practice. I just don't want the public to think that contributions for going forward for candidates and council members are not going to be reported under a certain threshold. I don't want that misconstrued in any way.
Understood.
Okay, any other, I see councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Temru wants to speak.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification. It was referenced, any contributions over a hundred dollars. If I'm correct, and I may be wrong, isn't the threshold at ninety-nine dollars you don't need to report, but anything over ninety-nine dollars you would need to report? Am I correct?
You are correct. Anything under ninety-nine dollars or less, you do not have to report. Anything over ninety-nine dollars, you do need to report.
So if somebody makes a contribution of ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, it has to be reported?
It has to be reported.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I'm a councilmember. I don't want to make a mistake either, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers that wish to speak on this item? I don't see anybody else. Yeah. This ordinance does not revise the reporting requirement. The report requirements remain the same. So, for example, during an election, if you receive a thousand dollars or more, communal of a thousand dollars or more from the same source, then you are required to report that within twenty-four hours of receiving it. So that will remain the fact of the, the only thing we're changing, actually, we're not changing anything. We're just going back the way it was prior to January first, two thousand twenty-one. The only difference is the new law that was adopted that established the four thousand nine hundred dollar limit unless we decided to either go the lower limit, the higher limit, or have no limits at all. In this case, this ordinance will have no limits at all and will be continuation, including all the reporting requirements under state law. So I think we're ready for a motion. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to the item as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Temru, Councilmember Lopez, second. We'll be first reading. We, I don't know if we read it by number and title only, I believe, as well.
Yes, by number and title only.
And so I ask to say quickly, take roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temru.
Aye.
Mayor Dutre.
Aye. So that motion is adopted four to one. Do we have anything else to do with this?
I'll go ahead and read it or?
I'm sorry?
Did you want me to go ahead and read the title?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-one dash nine nine seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Montclair, adding definitions to chapter two point zero-two and amending section two point one two point zero two zero of the Montclair municipal code related to campaign contribution limits in accordance with Assembly Bill five-seven-one.
Thank you. Okay, now we have consent calendar. I know C two, there was a question about C two. Before I have staff ask any questions, but a response to C two. Any items you wish to pull off the consent calendar? Anybody wish to pull an item off?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, I just heard councilmember Johnson trying to get in. She was before me.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I wasn't trying to get in. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Let's do this. I'm going to, Councilmember Lopez, you want to pull?
Yes, be like boy number nine, number ten, and see like Charlie number one, just three simple quick questions.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
Nothing for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Temru. Councilmember Martinez.
I have nothing to pull this.
Okay, so let's do this. Maybe we'll start with item C two. Can someone respond to what was raised under, by resident under item C two from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the chief can certainly respond as well. But I do want to point out that the city already does have license plate readers, so we are already engaged in that activity and information is already shared with other agencies. It's just not an automated system through the software that we would be migrating to. So through this migration to this new software, it would facilitate the city's ability to share and collaborate on this information. uh to share and collaborate on this information, uh as well as the fact that the software would be more compatible with uh specific city equipment uh that we have or would be upgrading to. I also wanna point out that there are already federal uh regulations, federal guidelines, particularly from the Department of Justice that prohibit the sharing of information outside of the police realm. And there are certainly prohibitions against police officers as individuals uh or as groups from using the information for personal purposes, or even from using the equipment to uh track the license plate number of a particular individual who has no interest uh to the department for uh other legitimate related activities. Uh the serious discipline for someone who would violate that is up to and including termination. And the department is very forceful in enforcing the standards related to ensuring that Department of Justice uh restrictions and guidelines related to this information are maintained. Uh so it is a very serious violation. Uh and I'm not aware that anyone who has done it has ever gotten away with it, and within our own organization, it has been a very rare occurrence, if at all, uh when someone might have violated the terms because of the fact that it typically would lead to termination of the individual. Uh we feel that it's important to be able to share this information, particularly real time with other agencies, particularly if there is an individual uh or a vehicle that we are in pursuit of, or we need to immediately share that information with other agencies in relation to allowing them or to facilitate their ability to uh track the license plate information. There was a recent incident that the city was involved in where we shared this information related to uh the vehicle and its license plate with other agencies. Uh this particular individual or group of individuals actually were involved in a homicide. And a result of the sharing of this information, uh the individuals were actually captured before they uh I believe they, before they left uh the um uh California, I believe they were on their way back east. Uh but the city uh chief police may be able to elaborate further. But in any event, uh we think that this is an important upgrade, and it is already only reflective of what we already do in so many other ways. Uh sharing information with other agencies to enhance and accentuate our ability to perform law enforcement practices. Chief, if you have something you would like to add, please do.
Yeah, I will uh add to it. You covered it pretty well. Um but I did wanna hit a couple points, and the first one is is we already have a department policy as it covers ALPR data, and by law, we are required to post that on the city's website, and it currently is up with our our current policy right now. So anybody can review that and see the policy that the the department has that we are bound by and all users are bound by. Um the one thing I did wanna point out on this is uh you were correct. We already did have a system. We previously had a system with Neology, and we were collecting uh um license plate information by the cameras that were mounted to three of our patrol vehicles. That system is is down at this time because the server system could no longer function with uh that particular camera system. And this uh system that we're looking at using now is really just accessing the software that's being collected in the law enforcement realm as well as in the commercial realm. But we are not collecting license plate data with our own cameras at this time because our system would need to be replaced. And that is something the department is looking at doing uh in the future, but it is an extreme cost to go down that road. Right now, we just wanna access the data that's already available, being collected by the other law enforcement entities as well as the commercial side of things. Any information that is collected by any of those other law enforcement entities, or in the future may be collected by us, or the information that we had collected in the past is not shared with the commercial world. It goes the other way around. Commercial may collect it and other aspects like uh uh businesses that are using license plate reading technology for uh repossession and things like that. That information may go into the system with Vigilant, and law enforcement has access to it, but any information that law enforcement collects is not accessible by the private sector. So it is information that we already have access to. This particular agreement is just allowing us access into the Vigilant system, which is currently being used by a great portion of our surrounding agencies, with the exception of one, maybe two. And uh this will be far more beneficial for us in the future as far as uh quick access for investigations. And just as City Manager Starr spoke about, it was used in a homicide in the recent past, which allowed us to capture uh four suspects fleeing a homicide um on their way back to Tennessee. They were captured out in uh Yuma, Arizona. And so it definitely was very beneficial for us identifying that suspect vehicle involved and apprehending those subjects who are now currently in custody and awaiting charges. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Any more questions uh regarding item C two from council? If not, I'm going to uh I'm going to allow uh Mr. Lopez, Councilman Lopez, uh first three items. So Mr. Lopez, item B nine.
Uh B nine, yes. Uh let's see, this is regarding the Christian Development Center real quickly. In um page seventeen of our report, they stated that they serve about three hundred families, sixty percent of which um are Montclair residents. I was wondering if they kept any records with respect to the other forty percent as to the demographics of that uh um group of folks that they service.
Uh while I do believe they keep records of everyone that they serve, but of course, the city only has a limited amount of money, and we try to share it with as many agencies as we can. So when a particular agency requests a amount that is larger than what we authorize, it is only because of the limitation on availability of funds. But each of the agencies do keep records of the individuals that they uh serve and uh report to the city. The number, but not the names of their individual clients, that information is confidential.
My my reason for asking, I was just curious as to the uh origins, uh residential origins of that forty percent to find out what other uh areas of the region we were servicing. That that was my question. That's the only question I have with respect to B nine, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on for a second. I see three hands up. Uh Councilmember Martinez, uh did you have, you have a question regarding this item?
No, I had a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead, on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we have eleven different programs that were recommended by Human Services to have um donations made by the Community Action Committee and um I'm sorry, Community Activities Commission. And these are incredible organizations. Number five, we have Family and Collaborative Services, Montclair. They help one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine Montclair families. We're a small community, so a number that huge, that that's incredible. So I I really just wanted to point out that uh we are quite fortunate that we have partnered up with these companies that are providing help to our residents. And I wanna thank the CAC and Human Services for coordinating with each other to make sure that our residents get the types of services that are provided here. And I'm sorry, I think there's twelve because I see number nine twice.
There's twelve. Thank you. Uh Councilmember Mark Johnson?
Uh yes, I have two things. Number one, I want to uh respond to Councilman Lopez, and then I have a comment. Um at the um monthly giveaways that happen at the Christian Development Center, there is uh when when people come in, they are, there is a sign-in sheet, and they um show some ID and they um so so they, the Christian Development Center does know uh who those people are. They won't, of course, they won't share the names, but I, they do have the information of who they are. And then the second uh, the statement I wanted to make is I I I do recall some years ago, having been on the Community Activities Commission myself, in this community benefit funding, we we used to kinda jokingly, but we were serious, we had to have Kleenex for that meeting because the things that we heard were so heartfelt um that, you know, it it just really touched all of us how much work these agencies were doing for our residents. One of the things that I probably will never forget, and it was with the Visiting Nurses Association, I see they're on here today, and they talked about a little girl who um had cancer and had been in the hospital. Somehow, they had given her the wrong dosage of medication, and she ended up blind and could not hear, but um Visiting Nurses was there and they had um a bed and everything for her in the family room so that people could touch her. And they, it wasn't just the nurse, it was the social worker. And the thing that that stunned us all is when the representative from Visiting Nurses Association said um the little girl had died, and when she died, she was in the arms of the nurse. And when she died, her mother was in the arms of the social worker. It's just really phenomenal work that they do. All of these organizations do fabulous work for our residents, and we are grateful to have them. And I really do thank the Community Activities Committee and Human Services for doing this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Ru?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um just quickly, um with Councilmember Lopez on the Christian Development Center, I'm fairly certain you could meet with uh one of the pastors, Rucker, and talk to them about how they uh do their services. The food drive is done with donations of food from the USDA and the um Community Action Partnership. Under those federal guidelines, they cannot turn somebody down. Montclair has no money in that program. This is just money, uh food that comes through the USDA program and the Community Action Partnership program. They cannot discriminate against anybody, and it's to help anyone. I would say the vast majority of the people receiving the food are Montclair residents. There are some who are from outside the area, um probably Ontario from what I see. They do take the driver's license as ID or some kind of a state ID for the people receiving these, and they do record that. Again, they they uh, the names would not be made public. Some of their other programs reach beyond just Montclair, but again, the vast majority would be Montclair residents. So, you know, I know you know the pastors, and just maybe give him a call, and he'd be happy to sit down with you and go over these, because they're they're doing some very good things. And then again, just to reiterate, most of the uh agencies on here are very well-known to us in this community. Many of them are agencies that have been around a long time, and I'm looking at Hope Through Housing, Montclair Meals on Wheels, O Park, Foothill Family Shelter, we can go on and on, and they truly are a great benefit. And when they go before the CAC, they do have to document how many families are being served in Montclair, and that is important. Many of them, such as Foothill Family Shelter, of course, have a reach well beyond the city of Montclair. But they do a tremendous amount of service here in Montclair. So they they're they're all very worthy charities. I would encourage any one of you out there in the audience, if you're so inclined, pick up the phone. All of the groups need volunteers, and maybe just volunteer whenever you have a moment free, because I know they all need volunteers. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
I I I don't want my inquiry to be misconstrued as um me having a problem with the justification for the um allocations and the recommendation by staff. I'm fully on board. I was just curious about that demographic data, that's all. Um as to the remaining forty percent, that's all.
Thank you. All right, you have uh, I believe, item B ten?
A quick question again, uh with respect to the nearly fifty-nine thousand allocated for the homeless outreach program. Um that's predominant, uh predominantly going towards personnel, correct?
No.
Uh no, the majority of the money is actually going to provide housing for these individuals, but you're right, yes. Some of the funding uh in here is allocated for personnel, uh particularly on the human services side of the equation. But the majority of the funding, I believe, for the housing program really is to assist uh with the housing of the individuals uh through the various programs that the city has in place.
Okay, I I was just confused with respect to the HEAP stipulation in the report. That's all, but you clarified it. Thank you.
Um regarding this item here, uh item uh B ten, I'm gonna recuse myself uh because my parents have a motel business near Montclair. I wanna recuse myself on this item. Uh on B ten. Okay, I believe you have uh finally, you have item C one?
It was just a um minor thing. Well, I caught it immediately. The contract needs to correctly spell the mayor's last name, that's all.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Okay, so and in um with that, can I get a
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quickly, I would like to correct myself in a reply back to uh Councilmember Lopez. You're actually correct, sir. The funding is for a code enforcement individual. Uh we are using the HEAP money for uh the placement of individuals in the housing program.
Okay, so then the majority of the, well, the the fifty-nine thousand would go to staff, which obviously complements the HEAP uh allocation then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, if um if I might, I would move then the uh uh consent calendar as presented, sir?
Okay, I will second it.
Okay, as I as I noted again, we'll take a, we'll take a vote, but uh part of my vote includes recusing myself, item C one, or maybe it might be a separate vote. Let's do this. Well, uh the motion from Mr. Lopez, I believe, is not include item C one, but the rest of the consent calendar, and you agree, Mr. Lopez?
I'll I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
And Mayor Pro Tem was, I believe, second the motion. Do you agree to that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's have a vote on the consent calendar with exception of item C one.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ru?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye.
And then C one?
Then C one was to say that uh actually, I'm gonna let Mayor Pro Tem run this portion of the meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Pro Tem, run the meeting, please, for item C two, or C one, excuse me.
What? I had to unmute.
I'm gonna recuse myself from item C one, so if you can provide
Okay.
vote on item C one, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move for approval of item C one.
Second.
I would second.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes.
A motion by uh Councilmember Johnson, a second by Councilmember Martinez. Uh Madam City Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ru?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre is recused. So that is four to one.
Okay, Mayor Dutre is now back at the uh meeting. Just completed consent calendar, and the next item is council workshops. And we have an item for the April fifth meeting regarding redevelopment foundation areas. Is there a motion for uh this workshop?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the item be uh held at the April fifth, twenty twenty-one uh meeting beginning at five forty-five PM.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Um let's do this. If there's no objection to that motion, then it's so ordered. And now we will go down to communications, and I will start with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. COVID up night, COVID nineteen update as of today. Uh the United States is reporting nearly twenty-nine point seven million confirmed COVID nineteen cases and five hundred and forty-one thousand deaths. California is reporting approximately three point seven million confirmed cases and fifty-seven thousand deaths. San Bernardino County is reporting two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight cases and three thousand five hundred twelve deaths. Montclair is reporting six thousand forty-eight cases, and as you indicated earlier, Mr. Mayor, uh ninety-eight deaths. Evidence from an early Stanford University evaluation has produced uh substantial evidence that COVID long haulers, those are individuals with serious coronavirus symptoms that persist, are actually finding relief from the vaccinations. Early concerns suggested that long haulers would face worsened symptoms after getting the shot. However, to date, there have been no reported cases to suggest that the vaccine is harmful to long haulers, and the study is indicating that most of them are seen remarkable, if not almost immediate improvement from their uh uh symptoms that they've been experiencing uh in many cases for up to a year now, for some of them. A good majority of them are are probably in the neighborhood of uh six Good majority of them are probably in the neighborhood of six months to eight months in the period of time that they've been experiencing ongoing complications. And oftentimes, the complications from the extended effect of the virus has been quite serious for these individuals. Now, obviously, there are a substantial number of long haulers that still need to be vaccinated, but the evidence is clearly pointing to the fact that the vaccination is somehow restarting their systems and allowing their body to fight off the continuing effects of the virus and allowing them to effectively recover and live normal and substantial lives thereafter. Beginning Monday, today, millions of Californians with pre-existing health conditions as well as disabilities will be eligible to sign up for a COVID-19 vaccine. People aged 16 to 64 are eligible if they are deemed to be at the very highest risk to get sick from COVID-19. The state is also expanding eligibility to people who live or work in incarceration facilities or homeless shelters, as well as public transit workers, including airport workers or commercial airlines. The high-risk group includes 10 categories, people with cancer, chronic kidney disease, chronic pulmonary disease, Down's Syndrome, compromised immune system from solid organ transplant, pregnancy, sickle cell disease, heart conditions such as heart failure, coronary artery disease, and cardiomyopathies excluding hypertension, severe obesity, and type 2 diabetes. Two additional categories include people where COVID-19 infection is likely to result in severe life-threatening illness or death, or acquiring COVID-19 will limit the individual's ability to receive ongoing care or services vital to their well-being and survival. With population estimates for the high-risk group at 4.4 million and with other eligible groups totaling some 13 million, nearly half of all Californians are now eligible for a vaccine. In Los Angeles County, the entire homeless population will be eligible regardless of shelter status or the current state of their health. To get vaccinated, Californians should work with their healthcare providers to seek vaccinations as their first step. Other options include local pharmacies, local health departments, community pop-up clinics, or using the MyTurn website at myturn.ca.gov. The MyTurn website is accessible to people with disabilities and it is also available in eight languages, English, Spanish, Tagalog, Vietnamese, Mandarin, Cantonese, Korean, and Japanese. Calling the COVID-19 hotline is also another way to schedule a vaccine. That hotline is available Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday or Sunday is also another available option for them to call in, also at the same time. The number to call in for the COVID-19 hotline is 833-422-4255. Again, that number is 833-422-4255. And the MyTurn website is myturn, M-Y-T-U-R-N dot C-A dot gov. And as with last week, I will make available a copy of my presentation tonight to all members of the City Council and I will also be posting it on the city's website. People scheduled for vaccination will not be required to prove they have disabilities or health conditions when they go in for vaccinations. However, those eligible will be expected to sign a self-attestation form confirming that they meet the required criteria. All vaccination sites are accessible for those with disabilities. If a person needs transportation help, they can contact a local healthcare provider, their health department, or a pharmacy to arrange transportation. If a person receives Medi-Cal through a managed care plan, they can contact the plan's member service department to request assistance or transportation. If a person receives Medi-Cal through Free For Service, they can access a list of non-medical transportation providers in the county where they live to arrange transportation. And if there is not an available local provider, the California Department of Healthcare Services can assist. They can contact the Department of Healthcare Services by emailing to dhcsnmt@dhcf.ca.gov. And again, this will be published on the city's website. Last week, the Biden-Harris administration announced that restrictions on who can receive a COVID vaccine, who can make a COVID-19 vaccine appointment, will be lifted nationwide by May 1st. That means that on May 1st, anybody in the United States can make a vaccine appointment at their convenience. California has met its initial target for administering more than 2 million COVID-19 vaccines in the hardest-hit and most disadvantaged areas, signifying the state's effort to more equitably distribute the doses and clearing the way for significant economic reopenings in the state of California. In a bid to address the inequities in its vaccine rollout, the state earmarked 40% of available supplies for residents in the most disadvantaged areas, as identified by a socioeconomic measurement tool called the California Healthy Places Index. The earmarked doses went to communities in the lowest quartile of the index, which includes roughly 400 zip codes throughout the state of California. Montclair did receive a portion of the earmarked vaccinations last Friday and they have been administered. Administration of vaccines has allowed the state to loosen the criteria for counties to exit the strictest of California's four-tier reopening plan, that would be the purple tier. The state system categorizes counties into one of four colored-coded tiers based on a few factors, which we have discussed with the council and the public in the past. Those factors include testing positivity rates, a health equity metric intended to ensure that the positivity rate in poorer communities is not significantly worse than the county's overall rate, and in terms of wider reopenings, which is what we are talking about right now, the ability to allow San Bernardino County to move from the purple tier to the red tier. The county made an adjustment rate to the case rate factor. Originally, counties had to record a case rate adjusted based on the number of tests performed in that respective county, at or below 7.0 new cases per day per 100,000 people in order to move from the purple tier to the red tier. That was the pre-existing requirement. But by meeting last Friday's 2 million dose goal, counties with a case rate of up to 10 new cases per day per 100,000 are now eligible to advance to the red tier, provided they have been at that lower case rate for two consecutive weeks, two consecutive weeks. The state's change to the formula for advancing will also give additional room to prevent a potential regression back into the purple tier. Thirteen counties, Los Angeles, Orange, San Bernardino, Amador, Calusa, Contra Costa, Mendocino, Mono, Placer, San Benito, Siskiyou, Sonoma, and Tulame exited the purple tier on Sunday, according to the California Department of Public Health. Another 13 counties, Sacramento, San Diego, Riverside, Ventura, Kings, Lake, Monterey, San Joaquin, Santa Barbara, Sutter, Tohema, Tulare, and Yuba are poised to enter the red tier as soon as this Wednesday, provided their coronavirus metrics remain steady. Counties progressing to the red tier are permitted to resume indoor dining at restaurants and movie theaters with a 25% capacity. They can welcome back students to in-person education in grades 7 through 12, reopen indoor gyms and dance and yoga studios at 10% capacity, expand capacity restrictions at non-essential stores and libraries, museums, zoos, and aquariums also can reopen indoor operations at 25% capacity. Amusement parks can also reopen at 15% capacity with other modifications starting April the 1st. This means that the long-closed attractions such as Disneyland, Universal Studios, Knott's Berry Farm, and Six Flags Magic Mountain are less than three weeks away from welcoming visitors after being closed for a full year. However, attendees must be California residents. I know that the opening of amusement parks will bring a lot of happiness to a lot of individuals throughout Southern California. How to widely reopen ultimately is up to local health officials, however. They can adopt rules that are stricter than what the state allows or requires. Based on San Bernardino County entering the red tier, Montclair facilities are now scheduled to reopen in approximately two weeks, starting Monday, March 29th, with restrictions including face masks and social distancing. City council meetings will resume in the council chambers no later than Monday, April 19th or May 3rd, based on completion of testing of technology upgrades in the council chambers. We will try for April 19th, but it is very likely that, given the time to test out all the technologies and make certain that they are working adequately based on criteria established by the councils, make certain that people can call in telephonically, on Zoom, and be in attendance live. It looks like May 3rd may ultimately be the date when we reopen the council chambers for city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and later on, still in the future, CAC meetings. City parks are tentatively scheduled to reopen with restrictions, including face masks, social distancing, and gathering limits on Monday, April 19th. However, this date is also fluid based on an assessment of park conditions by city yard personnel. Not every feature of every state, of every city park will be available. For example, the Omaha Hoffman Splash Pad is not presently scheduled to reopen until the summer of 2022. The youth center is not scheduled to reopen until San Bernardino County enters the orange tier. The senior center is not scheduled to reopen until San Bernardino County enters the yellow tier or a proposed new green tier that the state of California is contemplating. Separate agreements are in place with sports leagues for the use of the city's sports facilities. When the state reaches its next goal of administering 4 million doses in the hardest-hit areas, the threshold to move into the orange tier would be relaxed from a current requirement of four new cases per day per 100,000 residents to six cases per day per 100,000. Entering the least restrictive tier, yellow, would necessitate an adjusted daily new case rate below two per 100,000 people compared with the current requirement of less than one case per 100,000 people. The California Department of Public Health is working on a new green tier, as I indicated. This green tier is in anticipation of effectively a bright light at the end of the pandemic's tunnel. The presumption is that the green light will be an all-clear with absolutely no restrictions throughout the state of California. It is likely that the green tier will only come when the state reaches a minimum of 20 million people fully vaccinated, putting California closer to herd immunity throughout the state. Over the last week, providers throughout California administered an average of almost 188,000 vaccination doses per day. More than 11.1 million doses have been dove out statewide. One year ago Saturday, government news and ordered California schools to close. As of this week, 9,000 of the state's 11,000 schools have either reopened or set firm dates to bring kids back to campus. To campus here in Montclair, the Ontario Montclair School District is looking at April 5th as the reopening date. We believe that the high school will be a similar date, if not perhaps a week earlier. Deals struck between districts and teacher unions called for a mix of in-person and online learning and wouldn't bring middle and high school students back on campus until later in the school year. However, many parents want to see five full days of in-person instruction for all students, even as others express concerns about safety and sanitation in the school environment. So, the state, as well as the school districts and the unions, continue to work through those thorny issues. One last announcement, and that is that COVID-19 vaccinations will be sponsored by the Montclair Senior Center. These vaccines will be administered on Monday, March 22, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in front of the senior center here at the Montclair Civic Center. The shots are available for seniors age 65 and older, and this will be the Pfizer vaccine. The second dose of the vaccine will be administered on Monday, April 12. If anyone would like to register, any senior citizen in Montclair would like to register for the vaccine, they can register online. There is a flyer that gives the online address for them to go to. It's a very long address, I really don't want to give it right here. Or if they need assistance in scheduling, they can call 1-909-891-3810 or 888-743-1485. Again, the numbers are 1-909-891-3810 or 888-743-1485. And I do remind everyone that even though we live in the 909 area code, you have to put 909 as part of your call group anytime you make a telephone call in the 909 area code. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Mayor, you need to unmute yourself. I was muted there. Again, do you mention that the parks will open on April 19th?
On conditions of the park, though. Yes, that is the target date, based on our evaluation of the conditions of the park. We still need to do that and we're hoping to open them by April 19th.
Yes, and I know that at an earlier city council meeting, I believe, two council meetings ago, the council directed staff to put the item on the April 5th meeting if needed. And I would still say we put it on the agenda for April 5th and maybe staff can provide a report at that meeting, what the openings will consist of, what limitations will be, so make sure we have an understanding before the parks open on that 19th, if that's indeed the target date. The second thing you mentioned about city council chambers, and I will also ask if you can put an information item on that agenda as well on April 5th, and I'll suggest we wait until, no earlier than the May 3rd city council meeting, if indeed the city council decides to resume these meetings in council chambers. With that, I know that, again, a year ago, the pandemic started, and here we are a year later, and we are very hopeful that the pandemic is contained, and I think we're very excited. And I think Dr. Fashi, he's the correct person, said this, so what he said was that, think of this as a football game, you're running with a football and you're going towards the end zone to score a touchdown, but before you get there, what you don't want to do is start spiking the ball at the five-yard line in celebration that we have a touchdown, we haven't scored a touchdown yet, and that's kind of where we are right now. And, you know, I think I've seen some incidents in some parts of the country where people are gathering, no masks on, and there's some, I think, some elected officials that are waiving the mask requirements. And, you know, I think we should at least be disciplined on... on dealing with this very dangerous virus. And I'm very confident as things progressing and the variants don't get out of control, and hopefully human behavior also does not get out of control then by Labor Day, hopefully, but actually by 4th of July, as Dr. Fashi said, is that we should be able to at least have gatherings and have barbecues, and people will feel a lot better. At the last MetroLink board meeting, which I serve on as the alternate from SBCTA, good news is that they actually are seeing an increase in ridership in the last 30 days. They indicated that it's probably during weekday and also in the weekends are averaging between 30% and 40% increase. So hopefully that trend will continue off MetroLink and also for bus operations. One of the things that, one of the committee assignments that I got myself recently involved in, in the IUA Sewage Policy Committee, thank you Councilmember Johnson, I got myself ingrained with the sewage agreement. The sewage agreement expires at the end of 2022, and it's an agreement between IUA and seven municipal cities, including Kukamanga, Water District, Rivers and Ranch Kamanga. This agreement on how IUA will utilize or how waste, human waste, wastewater, excuse me, is obviously treated, how it's paid for, what the fees are, and additionally, how re-clean water is utilized. And it's in a very important document, and I'm looking forward to these next one year to work out this agreement with my member cities, and hopefully we'd come to a good ratification with the IUA board. Another important project that is a goal line, and I know that last week or two weeks ago, there was a meeting with myself, Mayor Pro Tim Ru, along with their city manager, a federal lobbyist, to begin discussing to obtain federal funds to especially federal funds for the LA County portion. And so we will continue that dialogue, and we hope that we can hopefully get some form of legislation or hopefully our members of Congress representing the local community can introduce appropriations or with the potential infrastructure project that President Biden is talking about in the next fiscal year. We're hoping that maybe the goal line could be part of that. Again, this is easier than said and done, but that's kind of a discussion that we've been having, and we're hoping that we can make a reality of obtaining the federal funds. So as I know, earlier today, we recognized 98 residents who unfortunately passed away, and I just want to recognize what were during the meeting in their memory. Mayor Pro Tim Ru.
Yes, I had to unmute myself. I concur with you about the 98 residents who have passed from this. Having lost two friends of mine to this and knowing many others who have had this, it is something that is horrific. And I concur with what you've said and what Mr. Culp said about continuing to wear face coverings. It's important. It's not just protecting you, it's protecting others around you. Now, I realize that early on in this process, Montclair adopted what I think was a very pragmatic and rational regulation to require the wearing of masks. I think it helps. I know clerks and stores have said they appreciated it because it meant somebody was caring about them, their first line in many of this. Many of those who deal with the public in a face-to-face manner were at risk. I know there was a philosophy throughout much of California. I know it was on display here in this county that it wasn't important to wear masks, that it was a personal decision, that you would know best how to protect yourself, your family, and those around you, and that to do so was somehow infringing on people's rights. Well, if you take that philosophy, then the county imposes speed limits in county areas. Using their own philosophy, you wouldn't have speed limits in those county areas. You would just trust people to drive the speed limit they felt was best, they felt was most safe for them and those around them. Clearly, that doesn't work. We learned from well over 100 years ago, the Spanish Flu pandemic, the necessity to wear face covering. So that was a completely different time and place. But the lessons were the same. So I do hope we will continue this as we move forward. It doesn't hurt to put on a mask. I keep some in both cars. I have them at home. It's not a big deal.
You have the nails, Mayor Pro Tim Ru, Doc, Councilmember Johnson.
It muted itself. It muted itself somehow. I'm having problems with it. I'm sorry. It does what it does sometimes. I just want to highlight for National Women's Month, as I did last month, a famous American, another American, a bit obscure in history, but nonetheless, very important. Her name was Deborah Sampson. She actually served in the Continental Army. This was at a time when women weren't permitted to serve. She desperately wanted to serve the cause of the American Revolution. She was born in Massachusetts, so it was a hotbed of revolutionary activity. She decided in 1782, at the age of 21, that she would simply disguise herself as a man. She signed up under the name of Robert Shirtless, joined the 4th Massachusetts Regiment. She served for almost 17 months. She had been wounded. She had done a variety of services for the Continental Army, everything from spying to having to look for ships in the harbor and actually quite a bit of combat. In fact, the combat is what finally created a bit of a problem for her. She was in combat. She was wounded. She tried to take the bullet out herself because she did not want people to know she was a woman. She turned around and was taken to a hospital, and it was there that they discovered that indeed Robert Shirtless was Barbara, or Deborah Sampson. She was mustered out in 1783 with an honorable discharge at West Point. The next year, she married Benjamin Gannett. Well, she wanted her pension that had been promised all Revolutionary War soldiers. They denied it to her, so she called on her good friend John Hancock, happened to be the governor of Massachusetts, and her also very good friend Paul Revere. They vouched for her. They vouched for her character, and indeed, she was able to obtain her pension. Beginning in 1802, she began a speaking tour along the East Coast, talking about her time in the Continental Army and what she did. She enthralled audiences, and at the age of 66, in 1827, she died from yellow fever. Women have been involved in this country from the very beginning, from our very founding. They've served in the military in many capacities, and they continue to do so today. Many are in very high-ranking positions, and I think as a country, we're better for it. So another person in history, if you're so inclined, read up on Deborah Sampson, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few items tonight. I'll try to go quick. The first thing I think that we need to discuss, although I know we can't discuss or make any decisions tonight because this is not an agendized item, but I really want to talk at a future meeting about Measure L funds. We all saw the proposed projects for Measure L funds. There are infrastructure projects, and all of them need to be done, some of them sooner than later. But the thing that is causing me some concerns is that that's not what we said, I don't think. So when we surveyed the residents of what they thought Measure L funds should be for, 90% of them, according to the FM3 report, 90% of them thought it should be for maintaining fire police and 911 emergency responses and repairing streets and potholes at 90%. So we got that with the infrastructure. But they also, 78% of them, said maintaining youth programs was important. And so I want to make sure that, you know, the departments that our respondents called out, we should address those departments. And also on our fact sheet, the City of Montclair Essential Services Protection Measure, it says in big letters, Measure L funding is for public safety, streets and sidewalks, parks and wrecks, and youth and senior. And I believe it is upon us to do what we told the residents we were going to do, and I would like to have a further conversation about this at a future meeting. The second thing that I want to talk about is I want to give kudos to the IT team. I don't know if all of you have seen the new website. It's, I don't think it's quite complete, but it looks fabulous. Our IT team has done a great job, and I look forward to seeing what else they're going to do with our website. I also want to give kudos to City Manager Star for setting up multiple ways that when we return to chamber, our residents can connect with us. I think that's fabulous, that people will be able to either come inside and sit in council chambers, or they can be on a Zoom meeting, or however they want to do that when they feel safe. And so thank you, City Manager Star and your team for making that happen. And then we have been talking for some time, the third item I have. We have been talking sometimes within sad tones about all of the businesses in Montclair that have not survived this pandemic. But I'm happy to report we have a new business that just opened recently here in Montclair. It's the Paradise Nutrition Center that's in the State of Brothers parking lot. I did, I was going shopping the other day, and somebody came and handed me a little card that said if you come in just to try our, just to try what we have, your first visit is free. And so I did go in there this morning, and I got a protein smoothie, which kept me full all morning, and I got a cheesecake that has no sugar in it, and it was divine. So they have all kinds of wonderful things. I would encourage the residents of Montclair to please go and visit Paradise Nutrition. It's in the State of Brothers Shopping Center. And then the last thing I have is that for those of you who, over the past few months, have burned out your electronic devices and had to replace them, and now those old devices are sitting around taking up space, well, we've got a solution for that. There is a free e-waste event on Saturday, March 27 and Sunday, March 28. Both days is from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. That address is 8880 Benson Avenue, Suite 110. It's in the parking lot, so it's touchless. You just pull up. There'll be people there to take your items out of your vehicle, and then you're on your way. So you can get rid of all that stuff that you're just kind of stepping over and wishing it would go away. Now's the way to do that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Let's see here, just a brief few comments. Everyone will be soon getting, well, a certain segment of the population will soon be getting their $1,400 stimulus, the third round of money to be allocated to Americans. I would like to encourage our residents to use that to stimulate our local economy, our Montclair economy. After you pay any bills and you have any extra income, by all means, eat at a Montclair restaurant, visit one of Montclair's breweries, shop at Montclair Place, use one of our Montclair mechanics, use one of our dry cleaners. Women use the nail and beauty supply shops. And like Councilwoman Johnson just said, if you want to visit Paradise Nutrition, by all means, do so. And if you like nutrition of a different kind, you can visit the CBD store in the same shopping center. I also want to say a thank you to Officer Dissis. So Chief Abels, please pass on my thanks to him and his fellow two officers for responding to the unfortunate graffiti that Los Portalis suffered about two weeks ago. I know Mayor Dutre made a call to the chief. I inquired of the chief for getting them some quick help, seeing some of the needs that they might be facing, given that their complete tent was vandalized. And I am very proud that the police department responded so quickly. And not only that, after even coming in the morning to address their concerns, they even had lunch there to support them, given the hit that they took with the graffiti. Now, that said, with respect to graffiti and the Code Enforcement and Public Safety Committee, I know that we have scheduled for April 19 the next meeting. I know that today's meeting was canceled. I would like that the April 19 meeting not be canceled. I have too many statements from residents bringing to my attention the influx of graffiti, the proliferation of graffiti in town. And if you notice, something that was brought to my attention, yeah, just look at the tagging. You have new names popping up, but there is a gentleman or a group going by the name of Tree tagging things, a variety of things throughout town, and it needs to be addressed. So if staff for that meeting could give us, give me and the committee members a report, please, on the graffiti in town and the abatement issues, I would appreciate that. Just a couple of questions for the city manager, please. I just want to confirm the dates. By the way, I'm glad you gave us a breakdown and calendar of dates of some of the city reopening. So thank you for that, because I have residents that have been asking me about a variety of those things, particularly the park issue. So, Mr. Star, you said that the first round of the vaccine event will happen March 22, and then the, correct me if I'm wrong, then the second dose would happen April 18, and I want to know if that would be at the same location?
Yes, it is at the same location, the senior center.
And the dates are correct, March 22 and then April 18?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then finally.
The second date was May 21.
No, no, the first, this is Marcia.
Thank you, Marcia.
The first date will be Monday, March 22, from 10:00 to 2:00, and then the second dose will be on Monday, April 12, also from 10:00 to 2:00. That appointment time will be given once the senior goes to the first appointment on Monday. While they're waiting in their 15 minutes observation period, they'll be given their next appointment date and time. But it is April 12 for the second dose.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you. Thank you to both of you. I appreciate you for both clarifying that. Thank you much. And then just real briefly, I really wasn't going to touch on this, but I have to concur with my colleague, Councilmember Johnson's comments with respect to Measure L and the funding source. You know, for years, I have been on the other side of the dais hearing that we need a, or actually, we've heard we can't address some of the issues regarding public safety and police and fire until we get a funding source. Well, I would concur that Measure L is definitely that funding source, and I think it's time we prioritize that. And especially since residents were under the impression that that would be a major contributing factor with respect to Measure L funds. I too would like to see that addressed, and I would concur with her thoughts. With that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I am done.
Thank you. In regards to the request by Councilmember Johnson to have me on Measure L, City Manager Star, are you there? I know that obviously the city has a workshop in June every year to adopt or consider the budget annually. And what I was going to suggest that we maybe have two workshops this year in the budget. Obviously, we'll have one in June. And I was thinking maybe we have an earlier workshop, maybe in May. So this way, staff and council can discuss on how to allocate additional general funds as a result of Measure L and what services that we want to allocate the additional funds. Obviously, staff will put together a presentation to determine how much funds we have to work with, et cetera. Are, do you think that can work, City Manager Star?
Well, no, May will not work because I will be under, I will have back surgery and
I will have back surgery and I will not be available in May. But secondly, I have to remind the council that this is general fund money and the moment you start identifying it for specific sources only, you compromise the lawful status of the measure because it is a general tax measure. It goes into the general fund. I think the distribution needs to be through the budgetary process and that departments submit their requests. And then we go through that process. If the council wants to accentuate the staffing levels or services of any particular department, that can also be brought up at a budget meeting. But as you know, we have a grant already out right now requesting to hire six additional firefighter paramedic individuals. If the council was to allocate funding out of the general fund for those six positions, that would compromise our ability to go forward with that particular grant. We would not be eligible for it. Therefore, I would suggest that we need to wait until that grant process goes through and ask for the police department. There were the one position that was funded through, that was frozen through COVID nineteen as well as a sergeant position. Those have already been given back to the police department. There are other, five other positions that were temporarily frozen related to salary adjustments a couple of years ago. And I believe that with Measure L, we will probably be restoring each one of those positions. So I think if the council really wants to talk about enhancing police and fire services, you need to let us get through the restoration of these positions first as well as getting approval of the grant. If it's a matter of equipment, then the department should be requesting, or the respective departments should be requesting what their equipment needs are. So for example, again, we have another grant that we are going to be submitting for another fire vehicle, fire truck. If we went ahead and bought a fire truck right now, that would obviously endanger our ability with that grant because there would no longer be a need for the grant. So I think that there are a number of things that need to play out first before we bring back to the city council any recommendations related to enhancing levels of service that we already have, particular grant applications out for, including both personnel and equipment. The bond that is being recommended is a bond that would be used for infrastructure. That would only take up a couple to three million dollars a year of what we envisioned would be nine million dollars a year in annual revenue from Measure L as it generates new monies for the general fund. So there is certainly going to be plenty of money available for all aspects of government services, whether it be public services, city yard services in repairing streets and roads and parks. Certainly, there are a number of park programs that the city council wants to pursue. And there are obviously other areas of service needs that need to be responded to. So we need to get these lists of things together and come back to the city council comprehensively later on. But I don't think a May date is certainly feasible, at least from my perspective.
And Mayor Dutre and councilmembers, just to add to that, we have been having discussions with HDL, which is the tax consultant of the city that we use. And because of COVID nineteen as well as the extension of self-tax reprieves for businesses, the numbers that the state is providing to HDL as well as other vendors is really in flux right now. So we don't really have an accurate picture of the sales tax that occurred for the fourth quarter, which would be basically what we would be basing the majority of our Measure L tax money from that we'd be receiving. And the Measure L doesn't go into effect till April first and we won't be receiving our first allotment from the state until at least June and that would be an advancement. So we really wouldn't know how much we would be receiving in revenues from Measure L till at least the beginning of the fiscal, next fiscal year. And we don't have any meeting set up with HDL till at least the beginning of June, late May at the earliest because the state is still processing all of the self-tax numbers as well as they just launched a new software program that has been giving issues to many vendors who collect the self-tax information. So I do know that everyone wants to, you know, start working on the Measure L and get this together. But I think we really need to be prudent and cautious in terms of figuring out how much we really are going to be receiving from the Measure L and waiting till we actually have concrete numbers that we can provide you so we can have a better idea to what programs the city council would like to fund going forward with the Measure L.
And just to add on top of that, keep in mind that we only have data right now for the first quarter of this fiscal year or the third quarter of last calendar year. We don't even have data yet for the Christmas quarter, so we don't really know how well the economy has responded or not responded to the pandemic. And as Mr. Fuentes pointed out, we really need more detailed information from ADL. The information we're receiving from them is very sporadic. I know that we project nine million dollars. But during the course of the campaign, we had to bring that projection down to seven million dollars annually because of the pandemic. While I believe that we will receive more money than that, I think we still need to develop harder evidence about the rebound in the economy and where ultimately it looks like the Measure L monies will ultimately generate for the city on an annual basis.
Okay, that was a lot said there. I know we're, it's not agendized for the Brown Act. So Ed, what do you suggest based on the request from Councilmember Johnson or Councilmember Johnson? Do you want to say something? We have to caution the Brown Act.
Well, I think we should still stay on target where we're going to do a workshop in June, primarily related to the tax measure, or rather the bond measures for both the pension bond and for Measure L. And then during the normal budget process, the departments are authorized to budget. I mean, they need to keep an eye on what they're requesting still because of the fact that we really don't know how solid the numbers are yet. But obviously the departments are going to be able to budget as they typically have. As you know, during the normal budget process, in order to keep budget in line, I typically have to cut four million dollars out of requests. But with the anticipation that Measure L will be online next year, there will be greater leniency for that. So I expect that as it relates to the needs of the specific departments, whether it be for personnel or for equipment, there will be requests in the budget. Plus, I will be providing the city council with a reorganization report as part of the budget process this year that will already focus on personnel matters throughout the organization. So let us follow through with those processes. And then later on, I think if the council wants to be more specific on areas that they want to expand on or particular projects in the community that they want to focus on, that should be part of a later workshop.
Okay, Councilman Johnson, you have a response?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Star. I understand what you're saying and that makes perfect sense, especially considering that we have not begun to receive the funds yet for Measure L. My only concern was that what we looked at a few weeks ago, excuse me, a few meetings ago, when we looked at potential Measure L projects, it was only infrastructure. So it sounds like there's more information coming than just what was in that report. And I look forward to hearing that additional information. And I do look forward to making, to seeing how we, at some point, whether it's in June as part of the budget process or whenever we do it, but I want to make sure that we give the people of Montclair what we said that we were going to give them and that we spread that revenue equitably. But you know, I defer to your wisdom. I know it's your deal, but certainly I look forward to hearing more in June as part of the budget process.
Brown app, but go ahead.
No, separate item. I did forget one item and that was I wanted to announce that SBCTA put out an email that there will be fifty five hour closures that begin the nineteenth. From Friday, March nineteenth at nine PM through Monday, March twenty second at five AM, the eastbound I ten from Indian Hill to Montevista will be closed. And then subsequently, Friday, March twenty sixth at nine PM through Monday, March twenty ninth at five AM, eastbound I ten from Montevista to Central will be closed as well. And then real quickly, I know we're running on time. There will be daytime and nighttime lane closures on Montevista Avenue and Followverde Street. And then nighttime street closures on Montevista Avenue, northbound, southbound, under the I ten freeway. And then Followverde Street, westbound from Central to Montevista. And those particular shutdowns will be announced via SBCTA. And then also just SBCTA could just address the signage issue a little bit bigger and sooner going southbound Montevista before the ten freeway. That would be great. I hear a lot of residents complaining about near hits, trying to merge before they get to the ten freeway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I appreciate the city manager star. I think you you heard some comments today. And then staff will do his best to, hopefully, maybe an early June workshop. We can kind of see what staffs can propose and they can hear our input at the same time. So with that, we'll go on to committee meeting minutes. There's one set of minutes from the personnel committee. And with this, we are adjourned. Thank you.